This is a recording of the Southwick Public Library Board of Trustees. It is January ninth, two thousand and twenty-four. Because the library closed early due to winter weather. This meeting is solely on Zoom with the exception of myself and Michael McMahon. Um, who are zooming together in one location. Alright, um. So we'll do a roll call. I've got Lynn Blair.
Cindy Warner.
Tammy Saig Basalon.
Ben Beldon.
Tracy Meswar.
Um, so I see no public comments on Zoom, um. So communication. Um, the legislative breakfast season is coming up. These are hosted by, um, local libraries that have like the legislators and the senators there. Um, the closest one to us, if anyone is interested, is Agwam. They're gonna be on February sixteenth at eight thirty in the morning, um, with Senator. And I always say his last name wrong, John, uh, is it Velis? Velis, Velis, yep. Um, so he will be there. We are using, um, Eventkeeper for our event registrations. Um, that seems to be going well. No complaints there, um. And we have lots of events planned for the upcoming year, kind of two of the notable ones. Um, we're having a grant writing workshop. With, uh, CISA communities involved in sustaining agriculture. It's a grant writing workshop, um. Tailored to, um, farmers to give them ideas for, for grants, um, and how to go about applying for them. Um, let's see, and Agriculture Commission, um, we're partnering with them to host a succession planning workshop. Here in February and then, um, we have a bunch of other scattered library events. Um, we have somebody coming in March, um. It was suggested for us to host a program on kind of memory loss. So we're having a woman, um, from our Brook Village. Come and talk about, um, memory loss and all that, all that's involved with that in March. Um, so we have a, a good lineup of programs coming up for this year. And then approval of minutes. I sent everybody the. November and December minutes by email. Did you wanna copy? Um, the only note for a change. That we had, um, in the November one was just under, um, communications where we, um. We need to add that, uh, the Greater Westfield Change Rock Conference membership was okayed for another year. And did anybody have any, um, corrections or anything else on either, either the November or December minutes?
No, I think they're good.
Okay.
I, we make a motion to approve the minutes for November and December.
Tammy seconds.
All in favor? Michael McMahon, yes.
Cindy Warner, yes.
Tammy Saig Basalon, yes.
Tracy Meswar, yes.
Okay, um, so then I do have the, um. Great, go away. Um, I do have the director's report with the December statistics. This one I did just forget to digitize, so I can just give you a brief recap and then, um, I can share it with you guys next month, um. So our circulation's in December twenty-three, um, four thousand one eighty-five, which is up a little bit. Um, our reference questions are up by seventy-one compared to December twenty-two, which is great, um. Still doing good with the number of new cart holders. We had twenty-two created, um. And let's see, yeah, I mean, overall, a, a pretty, a pretty solid month for December. And I can share that with you guys in first and next month, because I forgot to. In the midst of getting all the budget stuff compiled and posted, I'd forgotten to digitize that one, so I can share it with you. Um. Any questions about December at all? Okay, um, so for our old business, um, the gallery manager volunteer position, um. I still, I still have not gotten any interest, um. I sent it out to some of our past people who, um. Who have, have shown in the gallery. For those of you who, who haven't, um, who maybe missed a meeting, um. Janine LaPorte has been our, our gallery coordinator for the art gallery here. For quite a long time, um, and she has retired. Um, I mean, it's a volunteer position, but she's still retired from the position, um, and she's done a wonderful job. So now we're just looking for somebody to continue with the position, um. What they do is basically they, they seek out artists to display here, um, they handle the paperwork, the release forms, um. The setup day, the take down day, um. And so I've been contacting, um, past artists who've shown here as well as, um. Trust artists, local artist groups I sent it to, um, there's one in Westfield and there's one in Agawam. I've sent it to, um, kind of. Hearing what the volunteer position is about and inviting anybody to come to the January meeting, um. And I have gotten no responses. So my question is, um. How do we want to continue with that? Cause it is, it is a very prominent, um, prominent thing in the library. Um. And, and it is, it is, it is a lot of work. Janine, Janine did a lot more than I thought she did, which is fantastic and we're, we're very thankful, but. Um, we have since gotten no interest from any, anybody else.
Define a lot of work.
Oh, um, well, it is a lot of work because what they do is they need to, um. They need to reach out to artists, so they need to book. Usually we have our artist show for one month, sometimes two. Um, so they need to have like a schedule of who's showing throughout the year, seek out new people, contact old artists that have shown here before to try to fill the calendar. Um, there's a lot of, you know, contacting the artists to remind them of their, of their month, figuring out when they wanna pick up, when they wanna set up, um. And all the types of correspondence, like we have them fill out a release form, um, just in case anything should happen to the art while it's being displayed here. Um, so, I mean, it's, it's, it's fairly involved. And I was hoping to find somebody who has, um. Artists also have to kind of, not necessarily apply, but they have to kind of. Fill out a form expressing their interest, giving us kind of a sample of their artwork, so we know what they're gonna be showing, um. And I was hoping to try to find somebody who has kind of an, an art background who can do that, cause I think that would be really good, um. But, uh, no. Nobody has, has expressed interest in it yet.
Well, if you want, I'd do it until you found somebody.
Okay. I mean, I don't know how long that will be, you know, so.
Yeah, no, no, I understand that, but as part, I'm part of the cultural council.
Okay.
So we do have, you know, the list of artists that participate in the art show.
Yeah.
As part of the art council that we can kind of pull from.
Yeah, yeah, that would be great. Yeah, so maybe, um. Maybe what we can do is, um, the good news is, is that the artists for December agreed to display up through the end of January. So, and if it has to sit empty for a month, it sits empty for a month. I don't wanna do it for longer than that, um. But it, how about if you send me tho- that list of people, I can contact them and see if there's anybody interested. And then if there isn't, um. Maybe then we can kind of get you on board with everything or.
Have you, have you contacted Judy Bayless?
Yes.
I know that she has exhibited there before. She's, she's my neighbor.
Yeah, I've, I've contacted most of the people. I. I, I think I went through the lists and I contacted everybody who's displayed here in the past year or two. I didn't wanna go too, too far back because then people, you know, they've moved on, on, um.
Right. Yeah, no, I know Judy displayed not too long ago, so. I can talk to her if you want. She's my neighbor. She lives right across the street, so.
Yeah, talk to her, cause I, I did, I did send out emails to everybody, so by chance, maybe it was missed or.
Yeah, or it came at a time that.
Maybe if coming from you, she'd be more enticing.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, I'll see if I can do a little sales pitch.
Yeah.
I know that, I know that she, you know, has a group of friends that are all artists and stuff like that, so.
So maybe she can spread the word.
Yeah.
Yeah, so if you wanna start with that and then maybe touch base with me and like, I mean, like a week or two.
Okay.
And if we don't hear anything, then I can, Janine kept everything very organized, so it's really easy for whoever steps into, you know, she has file folders. Everything's organized, um.
Okay.
And then, um, and then if we don't hear anything from anybody, then, then we can kind of. Adopt you into the role for ten, ten days period of time.
Yeah.
Okay, that's great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, I'm gonna skip over the budget request preparation because I, I didn't remove that when I got the new agenda amended. That is kind of included in the, um, in the new business. Um, last thing in the old belt business is the furniture and shelving replacements. Um, we did order new chairs for our reading nook. They look very nice. They arrived today, um, so we're excited to get those out there, um. And the new shelving is gonna be arriving sometime in the beginning of February, so we'll hopefully be able to reorganize everything, save a bunch of space. And it'll just look much nicer as a whole. Um, under new business for the March trustees meeting, um, I'm going to be out of town that second week of March. Um, and unfortunately, I'm gonna be in the desert, so I'm not sure how good my, my connectivity will be, um. So my question is, do we want to change the March meeting? Do we want to? I don't know if you can skip the March meeting, um. What would you guys like to do? I can always try to move it to another week.
This is just my opinion, um, just because. We don't know yet the dates for the budget hearings, right? Or is that for any business?
No, I, I spoke with Lisa Anderson, um, because I was, I was concerned about my trip and like, if it was gonna be on one of those Saturdays, um. So it's not, we are actually, um, the meeting with the finance committee. Saturday, March twenty-third, um, so we know that date at least, yeah.
So this is, then I'm okay if we have to skip it, just because like. You know, if, if it was prior to that, then obviously I wouldn't wanna have the meeting, but I don't know how everybody else feels. That's just me.
Okay, thanks, Tammy. I hear no other strong opinions, yea or nay, so.
Yeah. I just, I agree with Tammy. If it's not needed, obviously if you need us, we can change the date. To what works for you. If not, we can just skip the month and just do everything in, um, April.
Okay, fair enough. Yeah, if something, if something comes up and we need to schedule something, we can pick a different day and then. Um, if not, then we'll, we'll meet in April. Okay, thank you. Um. The next thing under new business is, um. We're starting early and we're going to try to, um. Really, it's kind of been on our minds to really revamp our outdoor space because we have, we have a small yard, um, and it's kind of. It's a little empty and sad, so we, we have our picnic table, which is great, um, but we were thinking of adding, um. Other things to kind of make the outdoors more engaging for people, potentially have more tables for programming, um. So kind of our, our big idea is we're trying to, you know, hopefully get more picnic tables, um. I'm working with David Sutton, who's our, the buildings and grounds manager, to try to figure out, um, what we need as far as ADA, um. ADA approved, like, because I don't think Bark Mulch is ADA approved, but there's, there's other things we can look into, um. So figuring out what we can do as far as that, maybe adding one or two more picnic tables, um. Our children's librarian found these really neat, um, they're kind of like fixtures that go into the ground and they're like. Percussion instruments. They're really cute looking, you know, things for the kids. It's like a permanent structure outside, um. And we're, we're thinking of trying to get everything together so we can, um, apply for. CPC funds, um. Which, from my understanding, they're, they're meeting in February and March, I believe. Um, and then it's something that would needed to be vote on at the town meeting, um, and still the details are a little fuzzy. I've never done anything like that before. Um, but that's just kind of what we're looking for, for, yes.
So I was gonna say, um, have you reached out by any chance to. It, any of the scout troops? I know that the Eagle Scouts do projects and that would be like right up their alley to put something like that together.
Do you, do you have any contacts? If you don't, that's fine. I just, if you know somebody.
No, I know the, I know the scouts.
Yeah, if you, if you wanna, um, share, you know, kind of the. What do they call it? The, the troop leaders' contact information, then we can kind of have that. In our back pocket, you know, if we need some help getting things, getting things organized.
I wonder about the National Honor. They build really nice stuff and they do a good job.
Okay, cool.
Or is there something like, I know the National Honor Society students might need volunteer hours or I'm not sure what they count, but.
Yeah.
I don't know, I'm not saying like good, but just, I don't know, being somehow a part of it if they need it.
Yeah, if we need some like, you know, maybe like minor landscaping done or something like that, yeah. Yeah, so that's, I mean, we're still in the beginning stages of looking at prices and planning, um. And then hopefully the goal is to kind of have something to see if we can apply for. CPC funds. If not, I know the Friends were going to fund maybe a picnic table or something like that. Um, but if we're gonna do it, you know, we kinda, maybe it'll be nice to do it on a bigger scale, an extra picnic table, maybe a bench. Something like that.
Bench would be nice. You know, cause it's nice, like if you get a book and then you have it like somewhere near the trees so that you're shaded. It's just kind of relaxing.
Yeah, yeah, so we're looking at something like that. I don't wanna go as far as to put in like, um, you know, some libraries have really nice like gardens. But then somebody has to tend to the gardens and I tend to kill things, so I don't, you know. You know, that, that's sometimes hard. It would, it would be nice, but I think with the trees and maybe a couple of nice features here and there, it could be. A nice revamped up space and then we can do some programming and stuff outside there.
I think it sounds very exciting.
Thank you. Um, any other questions about anything like that or we can move into the budget? Alright, I'm gonna move into the budget. Okay, um, I'm going to screen share. For all of you, so I can bring it up online, um. Okay, screen share, so. I've got my attachments. Um, so, and I've got stuff for Michael in person. Once I find my. So we are going to spoke with the, um. Okay, so we're gonna start with the, um, can everybody see my screen okay?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, perfect, um, so this is the budget. Uh, we have to fill out for the town, um, he requested that everything be level funded, um. So, within that, um, I'll explain. Salaries we have to leave off, the accounting department fills that in themselves, um, and then the maintenance department. Um, the building, technically the buildings and grounds department, they control the maintenance and the maintenance contracts line, um. And I was trying to before today, get ahold of them, um, but they've been so busy with the, the snow removal and all the storms going on. That they haven't gotten the chance to gotten back to me about the numbers and what they plan to do. Um, so, I mean, if it's level funded, they'll stay the same. But, um, there, there is potential for it to change if. I mean, unfortunately, I don't have any control over that. That's kind of what they decide that they need for those lines, um. Everything else I kept the same with the exception of the info, info materials line. That line is tricky because, um. The Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners for state aid, um, requires us to spend, um. Based on our town size, nineteen percent of our town appropriated budget on informational materials, which is basically anything, you know, that can be checked out by patrons. Books, magazines, movies, what have you, um. So. Um, what I did was, um. I went through, and that nineteen percent is based on, um. The entire budget, so that includes salaries as well. Unfortunately, with the salaries, this is gonna be a little tricky this year because, um. Our union is negotiating, so I don't know what their salaries are going to be. Um, the last couple fiscal years, it's gone up by, um. By a two percent increase. So what I did was I sat down and I kind of calculated all the salaries of the union personnel out as if they would be getting a two percent increase, um. And then worked with that number as well as my number from my contract, um. And our assistant director, which we'll also talk about, um, I calculated that out with a two percent increase as well. So, that would kind of give us an idea of what the nineteen percent needs to be. Unfortunately, that's kind of a moving target because I'm not even sure what the salaries are going to be. So I built in that, um, that extra thousand dollars there, that will, um. That will kind of buffer us for that nineteen percent. Within reason, I mean, unfortunately, there's so many moving parts this year. With the salaries, um, and I don't know what maintenance is putting in yet for their two lines. That, as of right now, with the numbers I have, we'll meet the nineteen percent, but if somebody comes back with like a really marked in, increase in something. We meet the mark. Yeah, I ca- I calculate, so, um, and. I'm going on and on, so if somebody has questions, please interrupt me, um. The municipal appropriation requirement is what we have to meet, um. To also get state aid, so that takes into account the past three fiscal years, um. The average of those, with the, is it a two and a half? I think it's a two and a half percent increase.
Right.
Yeah, um. And so we do, given my numbers here, we do meet that, um. Yeah, so that's, that's my, that's my big lecture about that. I mean. That line, I, I think. Unfortunately, we probably will not be able to level fund that line and I can, I can make note of that definitely when I submit the budget, um. That because of X, Y, and Z with our requirements by the state, um, I mean, and it's, it's only, uh, it's only a thousand dollar difference. It's not a big, big difference, but. You know, I think they understand that we have, um, requirements to meet. And I mean, if you look at the past, you know, fiscal year twenty twenty-three here, fiscal year twenty twenty-four, we really haven't, haven't. Asked for that much more in our budget, um. So hopefully there's a little, a little wiggle room for that. So, um. I guess kind of what I'm asking for tonight in, in lieu of trying to get everybody together. Find me tomorrow, um, to get everybody together for another meeting, um, this year. If, if you guys approve the budget, knowing that, um, we're still waiting for the numbers for building and grounds, unfortunately though, we don't have control over, um. And then I may just have to adjust the info materials depending on what numbers they come back to because. Somebody was in our waiting room, um, okay. So.
Under the fuel, all that, I will keep covering it.
Yes, that is, that's my next thing, um. The fuel line, I was going to mention as well, um. Last fiscal year, we did have to move some funds over. Um, we had to move about, I think it was two thousand dollars, um, from our electricity line to our fuel line. Um. We would have still had a little bit left, but it was just getting close enough that accounting wanted us to move something more. Oh, there, there was, there was enough in the electric to cover it, um.
We shouldn't worry about, you know, between the two of them.
Yeah, so.
The rates keep going up.
Yeah. Yeah, that one I had, I had highlighted in, um. In yellow as well, because I just wanted to make you aware that, that, you know, it, it was close last, I think it just, I have it depends on the weather.
Right.
And the prices, I mean, it's hard to kind of say in January, you know, twenty-four, what we're gonna need to refuel. Yeah, yeah, I mean, so, so we've been able to borrow from the electricity line to cover for that, um. You know, if you look back in fiscal year twenty twenty-three, you know, we had, we budgeted thirty-three thousand for electricity and we, uh, expended twenty. So there's been kind of a good buffer for the fuel lines, so if, if you want to, it sounds like we should just leave it as.
Yeah, cause.
As is.
Eighty-four hundred for fuel.
Yeah. 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 Yeah, okay, so that one's good, um. So. Fuel line is good. I'm, I'm just checking things off as we go, um. Next page on here. Is the, um. Salaries, operations, and capital. So what I have here is, um. As, as we discussed in one of our prior meetings, um. We're still going to try, I, I'm not hopeful, but we can try, um. For what we created as the Borrower, Borrower Services Librarian Position, where we take one of our four circulation librarians, um. We kind of created it to be a twenty-nine and a half hour a week position, um, I went back to the union, um, our union steward, like we did last year. And I said, um, you know, kind of what, what do you agree is a fair rate for this position, um. And, uh, she came back with seventeen sixty-eight per hour, um.
The twenty-seven thousand. Is that the old money or that's the new one?
That's, that's. Um, that, that number is, um, what it would be for the position for the year. So I could calculate it out too, to include, you know, I don't have the number right now, but what it, you know, what our normal third would have been making compared to what this.
We need to move up, but that's when the finance committee gets lost.
Yep.
You know, like, oh, is it, you want next to twenty-seven thousand?
Yeah, yeah, so it's, it's not text, it's not technically an extra twenty-seven, it's, I, I can't, well.
We'll, we'll never remember.
Yeah, whatever number our circulation person would need, so technically it's like, you know, an additional X amount, not, not twenty-seven thousand.
That's the not that's the number.
Yep. Um, and so with that position. Um. Yeah, so. I mean, I, I did put it priority as one.
Right.
I mean, I guess it can't hurt, so. You know, that's, that's kind of where we're at with that, um. Did we want to include, I highlighted in yellow, did we wanna include the assistant director in there, um? What?
I, I talked to the chief administrator officer and he said. When we're submitting the budget, submit a memo from the trustee.
Yep.
And. We, we believe we'll need an adjustment of, and then put in whatever number. I did some calculating. On the Year of Aid Statistics website. If you look at inflation. It will be like an extra nineteen hundred dollars. I'm not saying we get nineteen hundred, but just showing, just, just based on inflation. I'm also gonna calculate, um. The figures, the other libraries pay, because Agawam pays about ten dollars a half and they are, then we pay. For the same position. And I, I'm pulling together information. Again, this information is two years old.
Yep.
It's never come up.
So should we include that as a priority one as well, um, assistant director?
Right.
I'll leave, um. I'll leave the brief expla- brief explanation of request, um, did you, I can leave that blank for now until you come back with the numbers, um. And then. Let's see. Okay, so that's taken here of salaries, estimated salaries, um. And then I did include at the bottom there, um, we, we will try again to upgrade our phone system. Ours is currently from, um, two thousand and eight, um, so I did put this as a priority one, uh, because it's from two thousand and eight, so, um. Decabling, I did, um, when we asked for this last year, decabling was quoted at twenty-one hundred, um, the price has gone up now. I did include that at the very bottom. Just as kind of like a note, like if, if we keep putting these things off, you know, the cost is gonna kind of increase, um. So the, the cabling is gonna be, um, two thousand seven hundred and thirty-four dollars and ninety-five cents, um. And then the phones. I think the phones, so we're gonna do six phones and they're, they're about a hundred and eighty-nine dollars each, um, I'm just waiting on the final pricing for that. But, um, we'll include that in our request too, and hopefully, you know, hope for the best there. Um. The final page with the five-year projection, um. I don't have anything on here unless there's something you feel that you know, that would, would be adequate for this section, um. You know, I, I, at this time, I can't think of any capital projects that, you know, at this moment, um.
Don't jinx yourself, Lynn.
I know, I know, see, that's the problem. Um. You know, the salaries, it sounds like we're gonna tackle the assistant director salaries in next year's budget, um. And then the union does their own negotiations, so that's kind of off the table for this, um. And then as far as operations, um, again, I think everything's been pretty well. They did give us, um, extra funds in our programming budget last year, which has been very helpful, um. So. I kind of, everything's kind of included in, in this year's request and not the, not the projection.
I mean, I'm getting more money from Boston. If you read, read the west news now, is that just you're getting a hundred and fifty million dollars for a roof or something?
Oh, do you know, spreadsheet?
You want me to support this?
Uh, it's due by February second.
Okay.
So, um, we still have some time. That's why I wanted to get it done early, just in case, um. And then I will give a copy. This is just the kind of letter that I send along with our budget, um, to the select board so that, and, and the finance committee, so that they know, um, they know the reasoning of what we're asking for, because they know, you know, the state requirements and again, it can get kind of really detail heavy. Um, but this way, I try to at least kind of explain why we're asking for what we're asking for, um. You know, explanation of the budget sheet, our municipal appropriation requirement, um, the first section here says why we asked for the added thousand dollars, um, in the info materials line, um. On Form Two for the, the circulation librarian, make you get into a position with more hours, um. I, I did highlight this section in yellow, um. You know, because the idea is to have, is to hopefully have another person in the evening, um, or at least some nights of the week. Um. However, what we decided at our previous meetings was that, um, you know, we don't want to keep asking staff, hey, are you interested in this? We're gonna try for this and try for this in year after year and have them be disappointed when it doesn't happen, um, because that's very discouraging. So. I, I'm hesitant whether I want to include this or not, because it all depends on which person is interested in the role, if you know what I mean, I mean, because we'd, we'd really have to do some kind of juggling for hours, because, you know, everybody works different hours, and if this person isn't interested in any, anymore, and, um, and somebody else wants it, we kind of have to figure out, you know, the four circulation people so that everything is still adequately covered. So. I mean.
Cause right now, we try to have two people on the desk.
Yeah, yeah, we, we try to have two, well, we try to, I try to have two people out in the main room at the same time. It not, doesn't necessarily always equal to two people at the, the, the circulation desk at the same time. But, um, yeah, so, i- it really depends on, um, you know, who is interested in the hours that they have already and how we can work around that, um. So. You know, I, I, I'm gonna kind of rework the wording of that to, you know. I don't want to say leave it ambiguous, but we don't want to kind of put ourselves down for anything and then be kind of going, oh, we need to shift this around because this needs to get covered and that needs to get covered. So. I'm gonna kind of work with the wording on that, you know, I mean, ideally, it would be great to have another person in the evening, but the evenings aren't always as busy as the daytime, so if, if things work out and we get it, you know, I don't want to pull somebody from the daytime, you know. I mean, you know, this position would be very helpful, because then we can have somebody who can kind of supervise out there and handle the day-to-day business, so myself and our assistant director can kind of focus on our stuff. But, so, so that needs a little bit of, of reworking, but. That's kind of what we have now, and then the note at the bottom, we need a new phone system, um. Okay, so let me go back to our budgets. Does anybody have any questions?
I do.
Yes.
I'm not related to what you just discussed or shared, but I guess it's more for the trustees, because it would come from us as a board. We talked about our last meeting, writing a letter from the board, um, on behalf of, or to advocate for Heather. Are we as a board going to have somebody draft that, or how would that work?
Well.
Yeah, it sounds like Michael's gonna draft that.
Okay.
Um.
Thank you.
Yes. So my next question is, um, is geared, um, and I guess I'll address it mostly to Michael, are we able to kind of vote on the budget as is, knowing that there's a few with the, um, the buildings and grounds that may change, and if that changes, then I have to adjust the info materials, um. But the, the majority, majority of it is there and it's done, we just have to, um, you know, and Michael and I will work on the, um, the assistant director line here. And then Michael will get the letter to me, so we can submit it all together. So is the board kind of, can we vote on it as it is now, knowing that maybe one or two things may change?
Exactly.
Yeah. Yeah. So that way we don't have to try to get everybody together, you know, again this month, because I know it can get kind of tricky, um. So. All right, I, I feel like I've been talking for a while, but, but, um, any last questions, or, or does everybody feel confident about what we have?
Hi, Tracy. Um, make a motion to accept the budget with minor, um, adjustments that need to be made.
I'll second it.
Tammy Sykes, Basileon, yes.
Cindy Warner, yes.
Tracy Meswell, yes.
And it looks like we've lost Jen, but, uh, but that's all right, so there, there's four of you here, so. Perfect. Okay. All right. And I apologize for my, usually I'm much more organized, but this night got away from me. So that was the last thing I had. Our next meeting will be, um, what is the second Tuesday in February is the thirteenth at seven o'clock PM. Did anybody have any last questions or anything?
I just want to say you guys drive carefully.
Yeah, thank you.
Tammy makes a motion, sorry, Tammy makes a motion to adjourn.
Cindy seconds it.
Although, Michael McManus, yes.
Tammy says yes.
Tracy Meswell, yes.
All right, um, then have a wonderful night, everybody. Thank you so much for being here and nothing our business, and now we're good to go for the budget. I appreciate it.
Okay, drive safe.